Your life.
Call to order, the Monday, October 23rd, regular board meeting for Westlake City Schools. Roll call.
You're not.
Here.
Lozinski.
Here.
Panukin.
Here.
Kraft.
Here.
Stoll.
Here.
If everyone will see this rise for the pledge. The United States of America. To the Republic of America, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We always like to start our meetings by reviewing the mission and vision statement. We educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives and to contribute to society. And our vision statement is the Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic student-centered 21st century learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement in tangible results. It is wonderful seeing so many students and parents here this evening. Um, has everyone had an opportunity to review the agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
So move second.
Roll call.
Kraft.
Yes.
Panukin.
Yes.
Lozinski.
Yes.
You're not.
Yes.
Stoll.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And we're going to start off with some recognition and some informative reports.
Cars and it drive. So.
Boy, Austin wanted me to set up the mobile order.
So are your classmates patient with you? Pretty much.
It's kind of fun when you have a friend that comes over.
Now, the big important question regarding Wednesday morning, what time do you open and will it be open before the NHS installation?
We're using one trying to get out of class there. Worked it. Yeah, that was elegant. Uh, we open at seven.
Okay.
Seven AM every day.
We're good. You go. We'll be there on Wednesday.
Society. Sounds good.
They've already the ones that have class have already asked the out of class to work.
Well, thank you. Uh, thank you for running the demon brew. Thank you for all of you who really uh, got it off the ground and and I have to, I I tell this story about Mr. Woods and usually when he's not around because I he gets embarrassed when people say nice things about him. But one of the things that I that I really, really, really appreciate is in going into this demon brew. He didn't just go to GFS and buy a a box that or or a bag of a liquid to say this is the strawberry. Um, how do you pronounce? Okay, Asai, okay. He um, he and his wonderful wife Amy, they at night, they would sit there and do different recipes and the different fruits and and I even came by and he had a group of kids and their taste testing. So um, it's it's he put a whole lot into um, getting it started. And it would not be running without uh, the work that he did and it's uh greatly appreciated. So thank you, Mr. Woods. Thank you all. And um, for those of you who came uh, for the recognitions, more than welcome to stay and join our meeting. However, uh, if you do have an evening in front of you, please feel free um, to uh, exit if you'd like. But um, we're just going to continue with our business. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
So um, I. So one of the things that I'm.
I'll wait for them next.
I like how she had her shallow on her back. So you know what? I I really just have a a two slide presentation uh, this evening and one of the things that um, I wanted to touch on since we were going to be talking about the demon brew. Uh, the demon brew is not the only thing that we have going on in in um, working with our students with disabilities. One of the things that um, our staff has been wonderful with and our administration has been really wonderful with is not only what we're doing in the classroom for the academic services for the debt students, but we also have uh, an expansion of opportunities and activities for students outside of the classroom. And I was just going to share some of those things with you because when you think about um, uh, a student's day and let's say a student that may not have significant disabilities, you can have a student involved in clubs, activities, sports, um, all of these type of social organizations in which they can engage with students. And Mr. Kraft and I are in Rotary together and we had um, a couple of students from our best buddies program that I'll describe in a moment uh, present to us and um, uh, the student who had some disabilities presented and and was really great about talking about how hard it is when you uh, may have um, uh, some disabilities to actually engage and make friends. And and so uh, some of these things are really important for some of our students. You want to go ahead to the next slide? So I just did one slide here um, and I'm just going to stack a bunch of pictures on it. So if you want to hit the, you can hit the first one. So I just mentioned best buddies and this is a program that we have at the high school. On the picture, um, you see Mrs. Divine and you should see Mrs. Sawcheck somewhere. Uh, she'll be in there, but those two really run our best buddies program. And what best buddies is, is you have students who do not have disabilities um, uh befriending students who do. And and they would go to activities in this particular uh, picture that you see here. They're attending a basketball game. Go ahead, Mr. Hopkins. This one is at Top Golf and this is from last year. This is a top golf event. They'll do movies, they'll uh, do um, uh, events at the high school and different things to to kind of get together there. Um, go ahead again. This is when when Mrs. McLean was talking about Mr. Coons in the transition room. Um, so we have students who um, are going to be with us for a period of time, you know, past their typical 12th grade um, timeframe. And so it's really getting students engaged in a community. And so this was actually from this morning. So this is hot off the presses picture. This is our community center here in Westlake and we have our students on the opposite side of that net. And we have some uh, senior citizens from who are at the community center. Uh, they're playing chair volleyball. And so not only do you have our students out and about, but cross generational one working and 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 playing with um, uh, some of our seniors in here as well. So that's really neat. Like I said, that was just this morning. Go ahead, Mr. Hopkins. This was, and you saw Mrs. McLean, this is an article from a newspaper and you can see it, this was in twenty twenty one. So yes, they were wearing masks. But the person on the left in the mask was Mrs. McLean who you just met. Um, and this is a place inside the high school called the place to be. And when you heard her uh, mention that um, uh, to Matthias that um, they'll they'll do some of the laundry. Well, they have they have they have different things inside the place to be. There'll be a bed, um, a kitchen table, um, uh, washer and dryer. So students in in the high school can learn um, some life skills to be hopefully some they be able to live independently or semi-independently. Uh, so that's a really nice program as well. And then something that really has taken uh, root inside our district um, has been the unified sports program. Um, really uh, 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 started by uh, Robin Val Pace. Um, Rob is a PE teacher at DIS and uh, Val is also a school psychologist, uh, middle school. Um, this is in all of all of our buildings now, kind of it's starting in the elementary school and I'll mention it in a moment. But this is our high school team and you'll have students um, that have some extra needs and some students who don't playing sports together. This is getting back in in, I'll tell you, so there's two cool, cool things about this when I'm looking at the high school picture. Number one is um, I I also like the fact when they have their pep rally for fall sports. Now, high school kids here, do you guys need to go to the pep rally? Okay, so not only did you have your football team, volleyball team and and other students coming out, but you also had your unified sports team uh, come out and the fact that just recognizing the team along with all the other teams is a really, really cool thing. And I know that Mrs. Sawcheck's big goal is to get our unified sports athletes their senior year, uh, senior banners like everyone else gets. So um, that's that's just some really neat things that they had going. So when we talk about the demon brew, we have to uh, then switch into Lee Bernison where uh, the Bernison Brew, they were the Trail Blazers. Um, you know, uh, I do see I have uh, Lee Bernison teacher here this evening. I'm sure she's received some coffees from the Bernison Brew. Ortiz, I'm not sure what you drink, Mrs. Williams.
Coffee and a Diet Coke.
Coffee and Diet Coke. So the Bernison Brew was really our our flagship. And you can see that they started that program, those Mrs. McHugh's class. Um, they started that program with a cart that was probably found somewhere inside the building. And they they made it work. Um, we were so excited uh, about what they started. As you saw what we did at the high school and expanded with the demon brew, but this year we got them their own uh, brand new cart. So they got an umbrella, um, a full cart there. Uh, they get to set up. Uh, do they set up and do they push it around or they set up in one location?
They push around, they come on and they take your order. Today was order day.
Okay.
And then tomorrow is delivery day.
Okay.
And they collect their payments and you can pay in different ways. So they do that, yeah.
Good, thank you. So that's the uh, Bernison Brew, the new cart. I hope they get some graphics on there saying Bernison Brew, but we're really excited to get them their own uh, uh, cart instead of something they found inside the building somewhere. Go ahead, Mr. Hopkins. The they also Bernison Brew, I believe this is the Kind Cafe in Lakewood um, where uh, they they did the Bernison Brew team along with some other students went on a trip there so they can translate their skills a bit uh, to a real uh, coffee shop. And so really grateful for that coffee shop to let us come in. Um, go ahead. This is our Lee Bernison um, uh, unified sports football team. Now, um, they were able, all the teams were able to go to the Browns camp. Um, so though they have that there. And if you could see the gentleman with the backwards hat there, uh, number seven, that is Browns field goal kicker, um, Dustin Hopkins. Now, I'm not saying the Lee Bernison kids are responsible for his great kicking. But I will tell you that this was taken on October tenth. And since this day, he's probably kicked about four field goals over fifty yards. So I'm just going to say it's because of our Lee Bernison cats and our unified sports team. So he can thank us later and all Browns fans can thank us uh, for that. So that's a really cool thing as well. Uh, this is the Dover and Immediate School Unified Sports Team uh, with, is it Chomps, Mr. Mayver? Is it name, is it Browns? Okay, Browns mascot there. Another great time for them. Go, oh, um, go back one. Can you take that one off? Thank you. Um, so another thing that they do in in Dover and Immediate School, you're going to see as we get into the intermediate and to the elementary areas that when a lot of those so- social activities happen within the classroom, so you're going to have um, uh, some peers um, students go into some of the specialized classrooms and what they'll do, uh, play games, do different type of activities to teach social skills and just basic interaction. Um, so that really, really is helpful. So uh, that's what we have at DIS. Go ahead. Um, so the same type of thing they have in the uh, that I mentioned in DIS with the classrooms, they also have in uh, the elementary school where students go in. But another thing that we opened up in the elementary school is a garden. And so we did even when we were constructing the um, uh, elementary school carved out a place to have a garden in there. And we do have a teacher that will work with their her class and compost um, and working on that as well. One more. The last one at the elementary school and is the uh, playground that we resurfaced with uh, went from the wood chips to the the smooth um, rubberized um, uh, floor, not flooring, but ground. Um, and what's really nice about that and and we did write a grant to the EPA, the the Environmental Protection Agency did cover half the cost for us, which was awesome. Um, but in describing it when when we sent that in, really the concept was we can structure things in the classroom and do those kind of things, but really kids have their best and most genuine interaction playing. And with our our wood chip surface that we have before, you would have students who maybe would use a wheelchair or um, really struggled with some uh, walking issues and and would trip and and that sort of thing, maybe left out. Or you know, you can have a student who not every student uses wheelchair needs um, a one, uh, like a monitor to wheel them around. They could on normal surfaces, they might be able to do that themselves. It's that independence and that ability to go play that putting this surface in uh, was really able to do is really what we were going for. And um, and it's been wonderful. Um, even you know, students who just go out and play um, are enjoying it as well. We're finding one of the things we didn't even think up is when it hat, when it does rain, um, usually when we'd have the wood chips and everything, um, it would get muddy and soggy. But here obviously it's like having a turf field. So the the rain stops and kids are get get to go out and play pretty quickly. So less um, indoor recess and and that makes people happy. So um, I just wanted to share some of those things and I have a nice W to put on top of it. Um, is that these things that you're seeing tonight with the demon brew are happening in the elementary school, in the intermediate school, in the middle school, as well as the high school. And with that overarching goal of bringing all of our students together and having all of our students have that uh, wonderful school experience. So I thought that would be appropriate in putting it now after watching the demon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for your report? Okay. We're going to pass it over to Mr. Hopkins to the treasurer's report.
I appreciate that uh, with uh, doing the budget last month and looking to do the five year forecast next month. I have no formal report uh, tonight. So I will save my recommendations to go over those when we get to that point in the agenda.
Okay, we're going to move on to the hearing of the public. Our Board of Education meetings are public meetings. This means it's a meeting to be to publicly conduct our business in front of the public. There are times a public may address the board during periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in a public debate and especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in the setting. Each person addressing the board shall give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the time allotted is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had an opportunity to do so. Recognized speakers cannot transfer or delegate their speaking times to others. If a person wants to speak for longer than three minutes, at the end of the three minute period, the speaker needs to stop. If additional people wish to speak, they will be given the opportunity to speak. If no one else would like to speak, the original speaker may continue for an additional three minute period. Period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. Is there anybody who would like to come forward and speak? Seeing none. Uh, we have approval of the minutes from the work session on September eleventh and the regular meeting on September twenty fifth. And we're just going to do a voice vote on this one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose? Okay. Moving on to treasurer's recommendations.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Um, tonight I just have three recommendations in front of you. The first one, I'll briefly go over each of them. The first one is uh, then and now certificates. Uh, we go over this on a regular basis. Uh, one thing I do want to point out. All money that comes into the district that that uh, that we collect comes under control of the district. And as it's under control of the district, we have to follow all procedures, including then and now type pieces. So um, I know I I was asked by someone about balloons uh, for homecoming. Uh, the reality of that is uh, that comes out of a separate fund. Student council fundraises, they sell tickets for homecoming, uh, pieces of that uh, that that monies cover uh, things like the balloons. Additionally, you'll see farther down that there's services for the non-public school. That's not general fund money for the non-public school, but we do hold money to involve auxiliary service and uh, federal grants uh, for some non-public schools. So uh, when we see these non, uh, when we see these then and nows, it's not necessarily uh, coming out of general fund. Um, in fact, I'm I'm looking at it tonight. It's about fifty fifty between uh, uh, general fund and not. So um, if there's questions about it or what fund it comes out, please let me know. I'm happy to explain it further. Second is uh, we do have a purpose statement, uh, getting an additional purpose statement. And then the last one is um, a continuation of uh, the payment in lieu of. Uh, this is for an additional school that notified us uh, of uh, transportation for their students uh, and then a uh, an add-on of a family or two for an existing uh, school that's already been deemed impractical for this year.
Do you want to take them as a group?
Yep, if so please, uh, uh, the board here, I'm happy to combine uh, all three into one mode.
Is there a motion to approve by A through C?
So moved second.
Discussion. I think it's worth noting that uh, right now gaggle is being paid for out of S R funds.
Hmm, it is.
And at some point, we're going to have to have a discussion about whether we're bringing that into general fund or.
I would highly recommend we do.
Do you want to spend a moment and just explain what the gaggle is?
Sure. So what gaggle is, is the 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 school district uses the Google Suite for Google Classroom Gmail, um, uh, Google Docs, uh, all those type of things that we utilize. So any of the contents that is created under our umbrella. So if if a student is out on their own personal computer on Google or and they have their own Gmail account, we don't have any, we don't have any idea what's happening there. But if somebody is using our school account, um, the Google Suite or anything, uh, gaggle scans that and it's for any type of alarming speak, whether it's um, self-harm or harm to others or you know, different, it'll it'll flag different type of things and it's a twenty-four seven monitoring system. So uh, my team will get uh, my administrators will get alerts twenty-four hours a day. So if a student types something in there um, uh, that that would be alarming, we're able to reach out to families and then let them know and to be able to address it. Um, unfortunately, it's 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 used more than we would like it to be used. Um, but it is something that um, we're very grateful to have in place.
So this monitors their their own private account?
Not their private account.
The school account.
District. So if they're using at W Lake dot org and and if they're sending an email with the um, school districts account or if they're typing a paper or something that they're typing inside Google Docs or Google Classroom or anything like that, um, this will catch it.
Is that regardless if they're using uh, a district Chromebook?
Yeah, you don't have to be using a Chromebook. You just have to be in our Google Suite.
Okay.
Other questions? One discussion. Roll call.
Stole.
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Moving on to superintendent recommendations.
Right. Um, I'm going to go through a couple of these independently. Uh, six A is one of them and that's a resolution to accept gifts and donations. Um, we would like to thank Tim and Fran Barato for donating fifty dollars to Westside Connections at Westlake High School. Robert and Amy Gersop, who donated fifty thousand dollars to Westside Connections at Westlake High School. Pillars, and since it's just one name, I'll read the address at two, 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 five, five Center Ridge Road, Suite two oh five in Rocky River. They donated two thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and nine cents to the athletic department at Westlake High School. My guess is they bought something specific with with that. It's just just kind of.
They didn't round it up.
Yeah. Uh, Westlake Demon Athletic Boosters donated five thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars to the athletic department at Westlake High School as well. So we would like to thank them for their generosity. Letter B um, is one I would like to point out and that is uh, resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding with our O P C local three nineteen. Um, this was something where it was just moving what the holiday is going to be um, uh, uh, in in the winter break and and due to where school is open and the holiday is falling. Um, we're just moving that. And so that's what this memorandum does. Um, other than that, I don't believe I had anything.
Try and explain C, just.
Oh, yes. This is a good one. So uh, letter C, we did put in and our board policy uh, um, firm that helps us with to stay updated. Um, this is a resolution that I am proposing from them. So as you know, the Howard Department of Education is being replaced by the DEW, uh, Department of Educational Workforce. And so we have a lot of policies inside our our policy list that have O D E listed. And what this resolution is, we're making a statement that those policies that we have in place, you know, where it says O D E, we're eventually going to change them to D E W as you know, these policies come up for review. So we're not going to just take all of our policies right now and and change all of the O D Es in there. Um, we're going to make those changes as we go through. So that's what this statement is saying is that we do recognize the athletic department of education is now the D E W, but I think it goes on Friday that was lifted. Um, and so now they are going to be transitioning into the D W. So thank you for bringing that up. Um, what's I would recommend is to do six A and six B separate. And if it pleases the board, six C through six R.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve six A? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I would like to thank everyone for the wonderful donations. Uh, Mr. Hopkins, do we able, were we able to figure out what some of these were?
Uh, my understanding of the athletic department donations were for wrestling mats.
Okay. Fantastic. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve six B?
So moved.
Discussion.
The one thing I'll say is this has been already approved by O P C. So this has been voted on and approved.
Well, so it's always good um, the relationship we have with our unions. Be able to work through that anyways. Um, roll call.
Stole?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, anyone like to make a motion for six C through R?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are on to our second hearing of the public. Anyone like to come forward? Seeing none. Let's move on to board comments. Anyone have board comments?
No.
Um, I would like to congratulate our fall sports teams that are wrapping up regular play and moving on into whether it's uh, divisions or even heading out to states. Our senior girls tennis player, um, Amira, um, I'm going to destroy this last name and I very much apologize, uh, Brahhat for finishing first in the Division One as state runner-up. Our senior boys golfer, Seon Park, was thirty-ninth out of seventy-two in the state championship. Our football team is in the state playoffs with the number eight seed and we have a home game Friday night. And I do have to give our marching band and football players a a big huh, big round of applause for Friday night and playing through that torrential rain storm that hit right during the halftime show and during the senior uh, dance. It was quite a show to be seen. It was great. And I felt so bad for them with the rain. Uh, both for uh, volleyball and boys soccer are advancing to the O H S A A district semifinals. And boys and girls cross-country uh, teams are advancing to the regional meet. And we have National Honor Society installations on Wednesday. And then we also have OSBA coming up next month. Any other board comments?
No.
Okay. Uh, moving on to board items, we have the second reading of policies. Any comments?
We did go through those during the work session. I think pretty good. But if you do have any additional questions, please feel free to ask.
And a lot of them were changes just based off of uh, changes in legislation.
Correct.
And um, just a few other minor adjustments. Alright, so we need to go ahead. Is there a make a resolution to approve these new policies? Nine B, anyone like to make a resolution?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Craft?
Yes.
Uh, stole?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is nine C, which is resolution to approve contracts. And this is a contract that is ten years for uh, between the Westlake City School District and the s- uh, recreation department of Westlake for use of the pool, the aquatic center for the swim team. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion to for nine C?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Always a good example of the collaboration between the city and the schools.
Exactly. It's always good to be able to continue our relationship here.
They were really great toward, by the way, you know, when we went through this again, it's very uh, the language is different than the original one. Some things we wanted to keep and it's good.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or an official?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
To enter into executive session at six forty-nine PM. Fanukin?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries. You are in executive session.
No bus, no uh, business will be voted on when we return from executive session.
So for those of you uh, doing this for a grade, you can come up and get assigned.